Welcome back. We now have the final committee of the afternoon, it's Bellingham City Council, that's the committee of the whole. We have four items before us today. And the first item is an update on interim low-barrier homeless shelter and a day center, which is operated by the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. So staff is here to provide an update on the interim low-barrier shelter that's being operated by the Lighthouse Mission Ministries. It's a drop-in center currently located at 1013 West Holly. This interim shelter has been in operation since October of last year. Staff and the Lighthouse Mission Ministries have determined greater resources are needed in order to proactively establish, nurture, and maintain good relationships with the neighbors and work with the LMM, Lighthouse Mission Ministry, I'm going to say Lighthouse if you don't mind, to demonstrate a good neighbor policy. Because as I understand it, where this drop-in center was wasn't originally intended to serve its purposes. It's a stopgap for longer-term solution. If council provides direction to proceed, then a budget amendment would be requested in the amount of $42,000, and this would be to pay for staffing services from July of this year through December of next year. Mr. Seppeler?
Yes, council members, good afternoon. I am joined by Tara Sundin, the CED Division Manager, and as noted, Hans Erchinger-Davis, the Executive Director of Lighthouse Mission, is present, should questions warrant. We'll step back for a moment and note that the Lighthouse Mission is offering ongoing services, ongoing shelter services, at their location on Holly Street at the drop-in center. That is a provision of service without city support to date. It's been done entirely through their own resources and certainly meets an agreed-upon city need. And we found that the response of community members who are unsheltered to the facilities has been high, and services and connections have been provided. At this point, we are reassessing and redeveloping site analysis criteria that we'll likely be bringing forward for your information at your next meeting. And that's a work in progress. I know that the Lighthouse Mission Board is meeting tomorrow, will similarly be considering those locational criteria. We need to find a location that works for both the city's broader interest and Lighthouse' functional needs to be able to support. And we'll discuss that further. We do have a situation where the current shelter, which as we'll talk about in the next agenda item, was a cold-weather shelter for a period of time and operated intermittently depending on the seasonality that we faced here in Bellingham. The current shelter has now become a continuous-operation shelter to meet the need. And I should note again, as you're aware, that shelter provides services not only through Lighthouse Mission but through other partner service organizations with the sole express purpose to find a path for folks in those, find themselves in the circumstance in the shelter to leave the shelter, to find permanent housing and get back on track, if you will. In doing that, while we acknowledge the shelter is certainly in the public interest and meets an identified need, there is a likelihood of having an effect on the immediate neighborhood. We had countenanced the shelter at the drop-in center being an interim that would be extinguished with the construction of a permanent shelter in the relative near term. And in planning talk, a relative near term is about 18 months or so. In this case, it will take us longer to locate another location, perfect it, make it occupable, and we're still committed to pursuing that. But we understand that there might be impacts that will occur by having the shelter more than intermittent, having a continuous operation. And we're working in partnership with Lighthouse Mission to identify programs that might help mitigate, to some extent, potential adverse impacts. A number of shelters in Washington and elsewhere on the West Coast have used an ambassador-type program. That program itself is one where folks who are in existing programs at the shelter or even shelter residents are trained, circulate, and look out for a two-to-three-block radius, perhaps even further, and do very frequent walkabouts to make sure that inappropriate activities are not occurring. Now, they don't replace police and they're not going to intercept and deal with criminal activities. They'll call 911, and that's what you should do when you see that. But largely, they self-police. And the power of that policing is that if activities occur, and this isn't true today for Lighthouse Ministry staff, if activities occur that are inappropriate, a guest could lose their right to use the shelter because those activities are inappropriate and have an effect on the neighborhood. That's called being borrowed or borrowing from the shelter. That's a very powerful tool to self-police. And in looking at that very preliminarily, we've developed a preliminary number based on adding some staffing to the mission's capacity and also funding the training of the program, and our police department would help too, to establish, hopefully to have it up and running by fall, if not sooner. The reason we're before you today is we would need to come and see you with a budget amendment because this is an unfunded program at this point. Additionally, we wouldn't want to proceed to developing a specific scope of work, and Lighthouse Mission needs to address its board's needs unless the council could see this being a reasonable course on which to proceed. So today, we're asking for direction. If you think this is appropriate, we would pursue developing a scope of work and returning to see you for a budget amendment that would fund it, and we can consider the specifics of the scope of work then certainly be part of the budget amendment. You'd see exactly what the dollars would buy and how it would be implemented. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this program.
Sure, Rick. Before we start, right now, maybe Hans could answer this, right now, they already have some kind of a good neighbor policy that they do some patrolling around, I think, their main facility. Can you describe that better? Because I'm not sure I understand all the details and how this might be different or more, or just the same thing but broader?
I'll ask Hans to join me and give you the specific answers on that.
The current good neighbor kind of thing we have going on right now is cleanup. So we send folks out around the neighborhood to do garbage pickup. And we actually just, we had that implemented last year, but we had to put it on hold because we had some staffing things going on. And actually, just last week, it got re-implemented with an intern who's organizing volunteers and doing that particular thing. This is different. This is like a neighborhood safety position, that's a better term for it, where they're going around and if someone's sleeping in the bushes of a nearby office building, they'll rustle them out of the bushes kind of thing. That way, the folks that are in the office building don't have to do it themselves or be scared or that sort of thing. And they're patrolling the neighborhood, making sure it's safe. So two separate programs.
Thank you. Pinky?
Hello, Hans. Thank you very much for doing this work. I'm curious about who we're employing to do this. Is there opportunity for people who are using the shelter to actually get employed by these programs?
No, not currently as it is. Right now, it'd just be one paid person, one to two, yeah, one to two paid people that 'd be doing this. And in many ways, at least in our experience, when people are entering into recovery, it's great for them to have an opportunity to be contributing to their recovery in some way. And so having lots of volunteer opportunities, which is what this would be for our guests that are staying with us.
They could volunteer to be part of, participate?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, but not employed?
But not employed, no.
Okay.
I should note, that's part of the cred that goes with the position. These are folks who are in similar circumstances but understand the broader implications, and peer-to-peer is always more effective.
Okay, we have a couple of council members' questions. Start with Dan.
Yeah, I've got three questions. How are the individuals trained for this program? What are the hours of operation? And then for the broader, for the shelter itself, how many people are being served?
So the training aspect of it would be in partnership with the city police. They would offer a lot of the training for how to de-escalate and things like that. We also have training procedures in place for our staff, monthly trainings for our existing staff. Everything from things like de-escalation to case management to a variety of things that we offer in terms of training. These particular staff, this particular staff person that'd be hired for this purpose, they'd basically be with the city or with the city police that that training takes place. Second question, remind me?
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation. It's mostly going to be during the daytime, morning hours in particular. That's when we get the most concerns from the neighborhood. It's typically in the morning time, and so that's the idea. We're hoping to do it seven days a week, so it'd be a part-time position during the week for morning hours, and then weekend position, also part-time. And then, how many people are being served in terms of the shelter itself or overall with the mission? In totality, the mission serves about 230 people a night, that's men, women, and children. The drop-in center itself has about 120 of those.
Okay, we'll now go with Roxanne.
I just wanted to offer support. I used to live on G Street in Astor, and so that is very close to the Lighthouse Mission. And I found them to be so completely responsive, responsible, thoughtful, and following through. One thing I want to point out is that a lot of times, neighbors will hold grudges against organizations or businesses in their community. I really want to encourage everybody in our community to try to work with the organizations that you're upset with. Because, for example, what was happening at one point was people were starting to, more than one person, was starting to sleep in their car on our street. The Lighthouse Mission didn't know that. And so just doing a simple form of outreach to the organization, everybody was like, "What happened? How did that get solved?" And I said, "I sent them an email," you know? And this is really good partnerships that can happen. Also, I think a lot of times, people are hesitant to call 911 in our community. We have to report these things. That helps the Lighthouse Mission's work, that helps neighborhood safety. But at the same time, I'd just like to make a joke that I think my neighbor got more calls for service than what we ever did for Lighthouse Mission. So I just thank the organization for being so dedicated to this.
Okay, Terry?
Yeah. This question, well, on this specific issue, I definitely support this, no problem, but goes to the, my question goes to a broader issue, so it'd probably be to Rick and Brian more. We know the population, the homeless population out there that we're dealing with, that we're going to have to take a bigger and bigger role as we go forward. It's not going away, it's increasing. And we also know the population is not from Bellingham alone. This is county-wide population, you know, homeless population that many times comes to Bellingham for services and other things because that's the only place there is. Have we considered, have we approached yet the county in terms of partnering with us in terms of, as we move forward, you know, with the Lighthouse and others in dealing with this, of approaching them to partner with us in terms of cost for these kinds of programs? Because the costs are going to serve not just Bellingham's population but the general county population.
Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. We're just discussing who's going to respond first, Terry. It's a great comment, and I believe that staff have spoken to Wacom County previously. Dan, I know you've done some work with the Grace Initiative, which involves Wacom County. You know, I don't believe we have a formal ask, a formal request on how the funding might take place. We know that there, there's a behavioral tax in place, there's, Wacom County is the housing provider for the county, so I think those conversations are going to emerge. I think they need to happen and will happen. Rick, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think it's inevitable to note that this is not just a Bellingham issue or a Wacom County issue. It's a statewide and national issue. And we need to look at regional leadership to solve it. We're dealing with localized things that we can control, but inevitably, we're not going to be successful as we bring in broader resources. So I think that that discussion must occur, and it must occur soon if we're going to get traction on addressing this issue.
Yeah, good. Because I know this is just a small Band-Aid and you have to take a bigger approach. Thank you.
April?
Yes, thank you. I've heard your name pronounced two different ways, Hans and Hans, so which do you prefer?
It's Hans.
It is Hans, okay.
It's a stage name.
Thank you. Yeah, one comment and then a question. At the very beginning of this memorandum, in response to cities' increasing concerns for the homeless, and granted, this is my own, it's not a direction from all of council, but we've had conversations and how we use our words matters. And in the future, I would prefer, I don't, of course, I'm not going to ask for a motion, but that staff has a little bit more sensitivity in situations like this where you can say concerns for those who are homeless or currently dealing with a homeless situation or living unsheltered. I just, I think we have to provide a really good example for the community so we can really start talking about people as individuals and situations that they're dealing with that certainly don't define them. The second is, hopefully, of course, our solution to a permanent shelter will be sooner than later, but we know just from experience that it could take, it could take two years, it could take more. So I'm wondering with the $42,000, when you come back with a further description, if you're going to have outcomes, your base for success, what are your measures going to look like? So if in the future, we need to also give another $42,000 or whatever it is, we can go back and see what were our measures? Were we doing what we thought we were going to do? So I'm assuming you're coming back with a more general on what the 42 is going to do, or is this it?
No, we will need to come back as part of the budget amendment. We'll have a scope of work.
Yeah.
And in that, it's fair to say, how do we know if there's efficacy on this?
Yeah.
And what we'll do is reach out to other similar programs and use, see what their metrics are, in a sense, and how they're measuring success, and then see if they would apply for us.
Yeah, I think also because we've said many times, it's related to the neighborhood concerns, and that's the voting community, but it's also Columbia, Leonard Street's downtown, so it might be a unique opportunity too, to see what those expectations are. Sometimes, I think it's a saying, is that there can be no disappointment without expectations. So once you expect something, you open yourself up for disappointment. I think if we're very clear on what this is going to do, I think it will maybe lessen those or bring them to a place that's reasonable. Thank you.
So I want to refocus that briefly, because I see some questions emerging. So you're asking for direction on the budget amendment and funding the position. That's the immediate request right here for direction on that issue?
That is correct.
Okay, we'll come back to that, but I see some questions. Dan, did you have a new question?
That was my question.
Yeah, okay. So at the moment, the staff is seeking direction. I didn't hear any particular dissent with coming back with that budget amendment to pay for that position. Is that inaccurate? Do we need a motion which we can vote on when it comes forward?
If you direction, it's by consensus, we could move forward with that.
Okay. I think we're seeing consensus to go ahead and develop that formal proposal. And then we'll go on, I think, to the next item, which is tightly related to what we've just been discussing, because it has to do with, I believe, the current drop-in shelter. This is a resolution that will require action exempting the Lighthouse Mission's emergency interim shelter from state building code requirements in order to provide housing for indigent persons consistent with provisions of state law, RCW 19.27.042. The mission is currently operating this interim low-barrier shelter at their existing drop-in center, as I said, located on 1013 West Holly. The use of the subject facility for shelter is permitted by zoning. Consistent with state law, building code requirements may be waived provided that, one, the building provides housing to indigent persons; two, is pre-existing; three, is owned by a public or a nonprofit corporation; and four, is found to be safe. The building official and the fire marshal have determined that building code deficiencies to be exempted pose no threat to human life, health, or safety. In other words, there are violations, but I guess the determination is or not safety, life, health, and safety-threatening deviations. Additionally, all other criteria, I just mentioned, have been met. The adoption of this proposed resolution will allow continued operation of the interim shelter without strict compliance with the code. That's a good summary. Is there anything more you want to add to that?
If I could, just some backstory on this. As you know, the drop-in center had been operating as a cold-weather shelter. That was when the temperature failed to a certain degree, it opened its door. At that point, we were able to use a temporary emergency use of the facility. And all, you know, we continually inspected, we didn't feel we had to come forward with the resolution at that time. As the nature of the shelter has switched to being continuous operation, it became prudent for us to come forward and just reaffirm the circumstances that we observed and to bring council's awareness to that. In terms of specific deficiencies, the largest deficiency is the absence of sprinklers. However, with a dedicated fire watch with near-instant contact with 9/11, the fire marshal felt that the building was safe and would meet muster for the use that's prescribed. All other aspects of the code in terms of like exiting signage, emergency hardware on the doors, the bars, pushbars have been installed. So it's a very narrow exemption. This is not uncommon. The purpose of the RCW was exactly for the circumstance we find ourselves in. We have a facility that strictly doesn't meet the code, we have a reasonable workaround that allows us to ensure life safety, and at this point, to require the installation of sprinklers would extinguish the use when we need it desperately. So we come before you today to ask for this resolution, which basically allows for the continued operation. As you'll note from review of the RCW, it's a five-year max, and we're hopeful that we would be able to resolve this in shorter order, clearly, a much shorter order. But it seemed prudent for us to do it at this time.
Okay, Roxanne?
I just want to do everything I can to support people experiencing houselessness, and I really thank the Lighthouse for being our partner in this. So I'm going to move that we pass the resolution exempting the Lighthouse Mission's emergency interim shelter from state building code requirements to provide housing.
Second. We have a motion before us. Dan, I saw you, you're fine? Pinky dice? Okay, any further discussion on this? You know, I would actually appreciate, if you could, a list of anything other than sprinklers, just so we can see that tonight. I'd like to reassure myself how minor they are, but I have no problem supporting the resolution.
I do have memorandum from the building official, and it's largely sprinklers, that's it.
Sprinklers is it? Okay, that's enough for me then. Thank you. So we have a motion to recommend passing the resolution tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, I'll bring that forward as a positive recommendation tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you, Hans. We now move on to the adoption of the 2017 National Electric Code. State law, the revised code of Washington, RCW 19.28.141, requires cities which choose to enforce electric codes to have equal or greater standards than the state electric code. Washington State has adopted the 2017 National Electric Code, effective on July 1st of this year, and to remain in compliance with state law, the city of Bellingham must also adopt the 2017 NEC, also to be effective on July 1st, 2017. This would be in the form of an ordinance. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Is there any desire to have this discussed any further? April?
Couple of questions. I know it was part of the original, but it says there's going to be a copy that's in the Finance Department so that people can review these changes? I was just wondering why it's in the Finance Department?
I think Finance has the privilege of being city clerk.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it seems a little counterintuitive to run over there. I also, just a quick question around the, first intent is to clarify the role of the building permit inspection process. I mean, I see the specifics about the cell phone tower, but it, I mean, I didn't see that it gave any more understanding of building permit inspection process, and I know we've had conversations around that. This isn't the same? Okay, thank you.
I think that largely, from time to time, we do these performa adoptions of modifications that are on the statewide level. I should note that Rob Costello is here, and he's one of our electrical inspectors if we want to dive deeper into it.
No, I was wondering, I thought I was crossing those. I know you know what I'm talking about, so I just want to make sure we're on them.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussions? Okay, this is a motion to recommend passing an ordinance tonight to adopt the 2017 National Electric Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, again, I'll bring that forward as a positive recommendation tonight. We have one more item. That is a work session on proposed jail financing and the jail facility use agreement. Staff is here to seek direction on a proposed jail financing and facility use agreement. Affectionately, now we're calling that the JFFUA. Yeah, I don't know, not a winner.
Be careful how you say that.
The JFFUA describes the financial agreements, including the use of sales tax and cost allocations of each participating jurisdiction. The JFFUA also describes the uses of the proposed facility as well as certain operational aspects of the existing facility. Brian, why don't you begin? I think it's going to be important, and I'm sure you'll touch on it, where this piece is and all the other pieces that have to do with the jail. What part we're talking about now?
Sure. Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Hopefully, you had a chance to review the memo. I did pull from our discussion on May 8th. There were the two questions regarding the breakdown of what it would look like if Bellingham went out for its own 10th, as allowed per state law. And so that first paragraph hopefully walks you through those financial considerations. The second, second part of that memo, there's actually broken out into a couple of different sections. The question was, to what degree are the incarceration prevention and reduction task force recommendations being considered within the agreement? There's three sections, recital number five, recital 11, and then the Part Two, Section Two, on the establishment of the Finance and Operations Advisory Board. So if you have any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer those. And I'm sorry, Michael, could you, could you ask me your leading question again?
Yeah, so there was kind of an impression, I think, at the last meeting, from the public at least, that the city was considering approving the jail, right? Whereas many of those decisions aren't embedded in this document and not really under our control. I'm hoping you could maybe explain what piece addresses and what piece it does not address. This is really, I think, more to the public. I think people need to understand what's, it's been a pretty complicated process, and we're not sure where the county's going to take it yet.
Right. So from understanding what you're asking, I think the agreement lays out how the financial considerations would benefit the city in terms of allocation around on the capital side, certainly on the revenue side. It does also address, I believe, some operational aspects, so thinking in terms of uniform reduction in the event of restrictions. We know we'll have to have an agreement, you know, from the time, if we get there, that this is signed to, and it's, the ballot measure's successful, in terms of how the existing facility is operated. And we did talk about that, if not on the 8th, perhaps the meeting before, in terms of one of the concepts that we advocated before was uniform reduction of all misdemeanances. I think you're aware that it appears that Bellingham is by large the one jurisdiction that is responsive in terms of sending post-conviction to Yakima. We also manage our own population electronic home monitoring. We know that not every jurisdiction does that in the way that we do. The uniform reduction language, I believe, puts all of the jurisdictions on a more even footing in that regard, meaning that in the event that the current facility needs a reduction in population, that it will be managed on a, Peter, is it a classification basis? So looking at not the jurisdiction but rather the classification of that particular person who needs to be sent out of this facility. Am I answering your question, Michael?
Yeah, I guess I'm being a little bit too subtle. Basically, this agreement doesn't commit the county to a particular location, neither does it commit the county to a particular bed scheme or scale. Those decisions still lie with the county, but wherever they put it, whatever size it is, this does set how the monies would be spent and how the costs could be divided.
So not exactly. The agreement in the packet does, recital number three, does commit it to the location that was addressed in '15, the bounty location in Ferndale. It does also articulate a size, it gives a range of that 440-bed plus or minus 3%. So on the high end, perhaps 453, on the low end, 427. It also addresses, and this is new, the 36 medical and behavioral health beds. That is something that I think the administration saw a great deal of value in, in terms of how the current population, if they have particular, whether it's behavioral or medical or substance abuse-related needs, that there's a dedicated facility within the jail facility to address that. So in some ways, I don't know if it's fair or not, but I think the way the administration has approached those 36 beds is they're sort of, in some ways, they're extra to the, what you might consider maybe general population beds. They provide a great, a greater deal of service for folks who are incarcerated. So to your point, it does address the location, it does address the size. We spent a great deal of time on the financial considerations in terms of the allocation from a capital side and revenue side to Bellingham, and in some ways, to all of the cities. Again, I think the creation of, I'm going back a couple meetings when we spent some time talking about the Finance and Operations Board, the Advisory Board. I think that is, that's something that doesn't exist today. I think it gives a tremendous amount of transparency and maybe oversight's maybe not the exact right word, but it does allow for policymakers from this council to participate, I think, greater on the financial and operations side of the jail, which is not something we currently enjoy today.
Okay, thank you. I'm seeing a number of questions up here. I'm seeing a number of questions up here. I'll start with Roxanne.
Okay. I'm going to try to ask this question in a different way, because this is what we need the community to understand. Where are we, as the Bellingham City Council, at in deciding whether this will go on the ballot or not, for the voters to decide?
Well, we're not there today.
Because that's what people need to understand.
Okay. So, we've brought this to you now a couple of times. We're asking for your input. We want to answer as many questions as you have about the agreement itself. I believe, as soon as perhaps next week, that the Waukem County Executive will ask the Waukem County Council if this is the approach that they would, for lack of a better word, bless in sending out to all the cities to consider signing. And when that occurs, we, and reason we're here today is we want to come back to you, perhaps in early June, and ask for your approval of this agreement.
Okay. Terry, and then Dan.
Okay. Couple of questions. You kind of answered the one up, as I was wondering, you know, what, if the full county council has had a chance to weigh in on size and other stuff, because I don't want to be going and looking for, forwarding something that they haven't weighed in yet, because I know a number of them also have concerns that I have about the size.
I don't believe the full county councils had the opportunity to consider it. I know on the jail task force, which we addressed at our last meeting, two members of the county council were on that. They had an opportunity to, to make some remarks about the size, and that, that will be forthcoming for them.
And the other question is, within the financing for this, if the county decides to take down the old jail, or do whatever with it, is that cost rolled in here?
Yes.
So, why would we, why would we want to pay for a building that the county owns to do with what they want? Because they could remodel it for their uses, or they could tear it down and redo it. Why should the citizens of Bellingham, we're supporting a jail, but why would we want to pay for deconstruction costs? That, I don't, that, I don't quite understand that process.
That's a good question.
Is, is that, I think, needs?
You know, there were many points of disagreement and negotiation over the two and a half, nearly three years now, of working on this facility. And I think, Peter, if you want to add anything, I think, I think that was one of those concession points that, in order to reach agreement on other areas of, of the, the document, that we said that from a costic, from a cost perspective, it's, it's certainly additive, but it's not, frankly speaking, it's not one that, that seemed stronger than others, that we wanted to, to really base the whole agreement on. So, it's a concession in parts to get some other things throughout the document.
But there's nothing we benefit from. I mean, that's, the county benefits from that and that space, so I think.
No, I'm bored.
I'm just saying, I've got problems with that.
So, the demolition is tied to the construction of a Sallyport, and I think that's important, because I think some of us have been concerned about what facilities would be provided within, near the courthouse, within Bellingham. We've, the police have expressed concerns. Maybe there's a connection there with a Sallyport.
Well, you know, there could be. There, we've had a lot of conversation, again, that's one of those points, Sallyport. It's not clear exactly right now, at the, today, how useful that will be to us. We want to continue that conversation with Waukem County and determine is what they envision building there, will it have a use, not just for, for Bellingham, but certainly for Bellingham and other cities, in terms of how we, what we come up with in terms of something we can use. So, yes, we have to, demolition has to occur of the existing facility to get there.
Dan?
To Terry's point, page 61 of the packet, item E, the cost to demolish the existing jail on Prospect Street and construct a holding space in Sallyport at the county courthouse, the cost of which is yet to be determined. So, how do we really know what we're, what are we buying here? I mean, if, if they don't know how much it'd take, cost to take down the existing facility, much less the, to build the booking facility, are we really 110 million, 100,000? Or, I mean, how do we even know?
So, the, the total capital cost, that's an estimate. Right now, we don't know. It's estimated at 110. We believe as, as we move forward and get farther into design, we'll have a better understanding of the, the full cost of, of the facility.
I feel like we're being asked to sign a blank check, basically. We don't, we don't really know the, the real number here. And, and just so the public understands this, we're asked, this is, you're being asked to spend 2 million, 2.2 million dollars a year to buy 70 beds for misdemeanors who can often be better served through Yakima or EHM, the Electronic Home Monitoring Program. So, that, that's what we're being, that's what we're being asked to agree to, to this facility use agreement.
No. The, the capital expense that, that Bellingham's being asked to is just over a million. In this, if you use the 110 as your estimated, our capital expense is 1 million, I believe, 64,000 dollars.
But the, but the revenue is over 2 million.
Correct.
And what we could, and we can take that additional money and apply that towards different programs, but the taxpayer's on the hook for over 2 million because of the, the way this is structured.
Right. Revenue to the city of, in excess of a million dollars, and then a capital expense of, of a million dollars.
Yeah. So, 30 million over 30, over 30 million, over 30 years to buy 70 beds, plus, you know, I talked, I spoke with the police chief, fire chief, Police Guild President, and Local 106. And what I heard back from Police Guild President was that there are some, some concerns around those additional 36 beds, which are sorely needed in this community for behavioral health. But I'm wondering what our access is to them. Are we guaranteed? It doesn't say that we're guaranteed a percentage. Do we have that?
Guaranteed percentage of the medical beds?
Yeah.
No. As I understand it, they will be part of the facility. So, I think first and foremost, they're, they're used for incarcerated individuals. But again, we would have access to the facility. As long as it's a, as long as it's a correctional facility, Bellingham has access to it.
But I'm saying, do we have guaranteed capacity access to those beds? When, so 68% of the people in, in the jail right now have some type of substance use disorder. 44% of them have a co-occurring mental health and substance use disorder. So, those are big numbers to me. And so, we have 36 beds out of 430, 36 beds out of 430 that would be used for behavioral health issues. What I'm asking is, I want to, I want to be able to understand that our officers have an option, that they, when they take that person to the facility, that that person will be treated or, or have some type of treatment or access to medication, or whatever, whatever the behavioral health component is. So, I, I just want to be able to understand, out of those 36 beds, do we get, you know, will we have access? Because we have not had access before. We've been booked out of that jail and booking restrictions, so I'm not, I'm not confident.
Right. There's one bed in the existing facility. And you're right, where on booking restrictions, probably, I don't actually know today. I assume that we are. We've, we've been intermittently over the past year. I, I don't know that we will have access. Is there a certain number of those 36 beds that are set aside for what Bellingham would use? I don't believe that to be the case. I believe that those 36 beds will be used as needed with respect to whoever is being brought into the facility. So, I can imagine a scenario where there might be a need for 50 or 60 of those beds on any given day, and maybe half is remaining on another day. I think the point is, is that those 36 beds are 35 more than we have today.
Which is still, it's not adequate. That's, I mean, that's, that's the reality, is that we just don't, we just don't.
Sorry.
No, no, that's all right. I'm waving at Michael, not you.
Yeah.
Sorry. No, you're all right. Don't worry about it. No, that's all right.
So, Dan, I think we may come back, but I think a, a number of people have questions that are similar. So, why don't we give everyone a chance? We'll start with Pinky next.
Thanks, Brian. So, I was on this committee, so I'm pretty familiar, familiar with most of the things on here, and I am comfortable. I feel as though there were concessions, absolutely, but I feel that we did a great job in negotiating for Bellingham taxpayers, and our, the amount we're going to pay is a lot lower than the original discussion. So, from 22% to 15% gives me a lot more comfort. And a lot of the things that we came up with gave us an agreement for a level playing field across how we're treating everyone the same. There is one thing that was new to me, though, and I'm wondering if you can help me out with this, because it does give me a little bit of concern. One of them says, and this was a big part for me on agreeing a lot of things, is that the Finance and Operations Advisory Board would be weighing in on several things on, and particularly how we are, how we are running our programs, our finances, et cetera. This says here to meet at least yearly. In my mind, meeting once a year is not enough, and a lot of things can happen in a year. Just in the changes we did alone with bringing in electrical monitoring, we reduced our population and our incarceration by 25% in a couple of months. So, I, I think that this should be something that I would encourage, that this be at least quarterly, so that there are check-ins, because too much can happen in a month, and that's too long to make changes if we need to make changes and to keep an eye on things. So, I would encourage, I would ask that this be, this committee meet at least quarterly.
So, it's a good comment. We'll see what we can do. I think what I would say is, if you look at the language around the Advisory Board, we really were.
Solid.
Trying to not be prescriptive on the meeting times, put that responsibility up to the board to establish, but we can certainly have that discussion.
Yeah. And, and I, I understand that. I just don't want it to come back once a year, because I, I can't support that. And that sounds ridiculous, but in regards to all the things we did. But this, for me, this board is a key element in us being successful and having a say on what actually happens in regards to the jail operations. So, it's, it's really important to me.
Okay. Before we go on to April, I want to check, are other councilors in agreement? We'd like to maybe request the, the frequency to be reconsidered?
I can, I can make a motion.
No, not necessarily. I just want to, I just want to check. I, I agree with you. I just want to see if everyone else. So, I think that is more request to the broader council to, to ask if we can revisit the frequency issue, without getting too prescriptive. Okay. So, I think I have April next.
Yeah. Thank you. So, one of the questions, thank you, you answered part of it, coming back with, what, what would it look like if we went out with our own? But the second part of that was, what, what would it cost us to have to deal with our own booking facility and then contracting out? And I don't, I don't see that here. And I'm wondering, I think one of the parts for me is, I don't have a really full understanding of what it would look like if we had to enter into this ourselves. And part of me thinks it would be really helpful to have Judge Lev, Commissioner Smiley, and Darlene, as, as well as the chief, to, to come. I know, I know after talking with Judge Lev and Commissioner, they've been thinking for a long time on what all the different programs could be and, and what it could look like. I mean, I also have questions for the chief, and understanding for me, it's just, it seems, and I'm uneducated on it, but it, if we could get the right programs, it seems absurd that somebody would be charged with a misdemeanor and would be spending any substantial time in jail if we had the right programs available for them. What we're running into right now is, our booking facility is our gateway, and so our police officers many times are getting, one, they're not having that opportunity, and then, two, the people themselves are not getting into the programs, and we could do more programs. So, I, I need to understand, I, as we heard from the, when they, we had the conversation around domestic violence, she said, there's some times when we really need somebody removed for a period of time, so everybody else in that situation can heal. I imagine there are times when we really need to specifically have people incarcerated because they're a danger to the community for a misdemeanor, but I just, I think for all the futurists out there, the hardest part for me, looking at my young children every day, is I know we're in a winter right now, and for some of you, you don't understand what that means, but we are in a winter, and there's only been so many winters in, in the last 100 years. But every decision we're making is going to be a decision for the next generation. So, three-year-olds now, like, they're going to have this 20 years from now, and if we are on the wrong side of this criminal justice reform, people are going to, it's going to be absurd. People will look back at us and say, the, the tide was moving, and why didn't you jump on it? Like, why did you build this facility that, there's no joint statement of all of us, all of us together, small cities. We don't have any resolution that says that we are committed to criminal justice reform, and here's how we're going to do it. There's no incentives on if we don't use the facility, whatever that would look like. We're still kind of going back to the status quo, and I'm super thankful to Pinky and Jean and all those that went through. But I need more information before I can sign on to this, because I don't know what it looks like if we, as a city, decide we are just not as aligned with our partners out in the county with the way we want to see criminal justice reformed. And if that's the case, then we're going to have to take the lead on that and do it ourselves. So, that for me, I don't know for the rest of council, would be a really helpful discussion to leave some time, to get some ideas from Judge Lev and the Commissioner and Darlene, as well as understand better from the police, what is it, what are the types of people that we're talking about, that we just have to have in prison, that we, or in jail, sorry, that we can't get there? So, that's, that's one, and I can make a motion for that, depending on what I hear from other people. I'm still really, I'm held up on the location, and, and I've really tried to go beyond it. And, and the reason why I'm trying to go beyond it is because I, I understand, it's like talking to your parents that need to kind of change their generational views, and, and just each time you tick away, you get them a little bit further, and, and it's a win. And I can see where this is, we got a lot. We got some, some mental health beds, we have some substance abuse treatment in beds, we're going to hopefully have some new programs, we're going to have an oversight. But still, that location and the ordinance that we passed around immigration, like, we made that step here in Bellingham to tell people, people of color especially, and, and people who many times others will assume that, that they're immigrants and they're not, we know that they're disproportionately represented in a, a jail population and a prison population. And now, we've put this outside of our scope, outside of our jurisdiction, where people are going to have to, not, not great bus service, they're going to have to get in a car and go out to this facility to visit their loved ones. And, and we already know that people of color don't feel comfortable because of the current situation, and that the county has not made any kind of a resolution like we did to say, we're, we're not going to discriminate against people that way. So, we have a disproportionate amount of people of color already in jail, and then we're going to ask our Bellingham residents and their families to have to go back out into the county and back and forth with this, and could possibly put themselves at more risk for being pulled over and other things. So, there's a lot of concerns that we have to look at, I think, just beyond saying the location isn't best for our police and, and getting them there, but it's also for our residents and the commitments that we made in, in a resolution, and understanding how they feel once they leave Bellingham. So, I'm still trying to understand those. If I could get more information from the, from the judge and the police about, the chief, about why we just really can't do this on our own, or why this really does we are matching up with the county appropriately, then it would help me get on board.
Michael?
To your point, April, that would be a separate discussion. This is a jail use agreement. We could have that discussion separately. You know, it's frustrating for me to have served on a committee for 10 months, and it doesn't look like there's support for this now. That's concerning. It's all about money. I mean, if we go out on our own, this, this will look like nothing if we go build our own jail, period. What we're spending in Yakima, I mean, is, is money. But you want, you know, we were faced with this 20-some years ago, when we were having trouble with the county not billing us properly. We quit paying. There was a $6 million lawsuit. Pete and Mark settled the lawsuit. This has been a long, long issue. I agree with Terry. I, I pretty much can say right now that the, the figure that's in here now for the jail size is not going to be that figure. Barry and Todd were explicit in the motion that was made. They didn't want any mention of the amount of beds in that jail, because that's their decision over there, and they're going to decide how big that jail is. What I would like to see is the county council, let them look at this. There's no more committee to go back to. We disband it? I don't think our, our negotiating side, and I see Tyler up there, I don't think they want to get back down and start hammering over this all again. It's going to be up to the citizens of, of Waukem County whether this goes through again. Now, it's two years. Everybody can say we had it on the ballot last year. It was 2015. It's a two-year window, and that's how much time has been spent trying to bring something forward. The mayor and her staff did a great job representing the city. Pinky and I did the best we could. The mayor and her staff did a great job representing the city, Pinky and I did the best we could, everybody on the committee did a great job. Questions, yes, but I think we need to be serious this time around, because if we don't sign on to this, we're going to be in the back, you know, we're going to be in the position. And I concede, it was the right position for you all to be in last time, considering what happened, and considering, you know, what's happened to us since. But as far as running our own system, we need a jail use agreement, and, and as far as the location, April, I, I don't see any, I mean, even some of the county council members conceded that, but there's no, there's no appetite to revisit that. So I, I just think, let the county council weigh on this and see what they send us back. I mean, that's, that's the way we should do it.
Roxanne.
I feel depressed. We have gone round and round and round about this. This has been a pain for us so extensively that it brings me to the point of depression Simply what I feel is that we had a committee that came together to look at this jail financing and facility use agreement. One of the things that I appreciate is that that included the small-town council members, that included us, the administrators from the county and the city, and guess what? It also included tribal members. I cannot believe that this group of people, such a big body of people, agreed on one thing, let alone this thing. So we're not going to get everything we want out of this. Heck, I still wish it was a property tax. I was wanting to fight for that, but I am willing to make concessions because this is a dire need. We're not at a point in our society where we can have no jails and we can have no laws. I'm not trying to reduce this to absurdity, but it's the reality that we're in. This is why simultaneously I fight for diversions, alternatives, mental health court, drug court, we need to tell that story, we need to show the financial improvements that it makes, but it's not the thing that is going to save us from needing to incarcerate people. I cannot look my tribal members in the face, who have been victims of domestic violence, and say that we do not have an adequate jail to send their perpetrators to. That's just an example of how we need to protect our community. Look, I'm not excited about supporting a jail, but I'm just saying, we have an unsafe situation now, we need to have a jail somewhere. I can't imagine where we would locate this, other than Ferndale. And if we had tribal members that were on there, as people of color, that were willing to support this, let's try to work with it.
Okay, Dan?
Sure. Is that okay?
The, the, so Nick, Nick came from Lumbee Business Council, he didn't have a vote in this, because they are not included in the agreement. I just want to make that clear.
He voted to abstain.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. We're to go to Dan, and I'll take a turn, and then Terry.
Just a clarification question for Brian. Page 61, item B, land acquisition costs for the La Bountie Road property, says it's 3.39-ish million. Does that include the, the site preparation costs as well, or is that just the dirt?
Just, just the land cost.
That's just purely the land cost? So, so there were, there were mitigation, or there will be mitigation? Do we know what that number looks like?
I don't. I can find that out.
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to take a turn, then you, Terry. So I guess that's why, I, I kind of started off with a question I did, Brian, and I'm sorry, I was, you know, a little bit subtle about it.
Right. Don't, don't ever hint, Michael.
Okay. So, at that, at that last, the Friday meeting, the last meeting where they disbanded, the two county council members who were there both expressed some comfort, discomfort, and the entire committee moved in their final motion to not endorse the draft agreement per se, but to endorse these three principles. And part of that is, they didn't want to sign on to the location and the cost and the size issues. They knew they couldn't step away from them completely, but those continue to be concerns, and I, you know, like I said, property taxes, yeah, I, I still would have liked that. Has that train left, you know, location? They're committed to La Bountie Road location, I think they are inside Bellingham locations. Has that train already left? Size, I think we're still fighting that battle. I, I know there are county council members who are talking about significantly lower numbers, right? So this 110 estimate, I, I think that still could change, and that's the county's councils and, you know, the county governments are responsible to change that. I think those issues are not as solid as you might perceive when you read this. And that's unfortunate, because this financial piece, I think, has been pretty well worked out. I agree with the work that the committee did, you know, Pinky and Jean, the financial cost-sharing aspect and some of the other issues. This is a huge improvement. This piece is much improved. The other ones that are not, that are implied or implicated in this agreement, I'm not as happy with them. The one part of this that I think I'm choking on the most, and maybe it can be improved, has to do with the issue of the destruction of the current jail and what might be put in its place physically, the holding facility, the Sallyport. My concern is that if the county, you know, if, if it turns out to be more than 110, if the county has to economize, if the county has to rejigger where it's going, that might be an area where they might skimp, right? We would like a significant booking facility and a holding facility presence, more than a minimal one. The county might get, be fine with a minimalist facility, which wouldn't serve Bellingham's needs. Since that piece is more fluid than the rest, I'm concerned that that's where we might end up getting pinched, if, if the dollars end up running short, if the costs end up running high, if the size is larger than the budget can handle. So that, that one point concerns me. But I, I want to repeat, financially, this is a much fairer arrangement, there's so much improvement here, I appreciate that fact. I think, Terry, you...
My last comment on this in terms of direction with this, you know, I agree the committee did a great job in terms of moving, moving things forward in terms of the financials, a whole lot better than it was, and looked at a lot of things. The sticking point for me, it comes down to the size, and I want, need to hear from the county council what that's going to be, because without the size reduction, there is no motivation whatsoever to continue with the reforms that have been put in place. Once you've decided that, yes, we've got all this space, what is the motivation to continue trying to push for reductions? We wouldn't have had the, the kinds of programs that we got in place now if we wouldn't have been in a jam. We didn't do it because we, some of us had been saying that that needed to happen before. It was only out of necessity, that we were able to get really creative and do some creative things, and reduce the amount of bookings here. And I know on the county side, speaking with some of the judges and commissioners, they're looking at as well, a continuation or wanting a continuation of alternatives to, to just jailing. And if we just say, yeah, we'll go along with that number, we've, all that motivation is out the window, in my mind. So my direction is county council, bring us back some numbers that we can support. A lot of the financials, I don't like, April, I don't like that location either, but I do know the county already sprung for that amount without, and bought that property, and given what's there, they probably can't get their money back out of it, and they're, they didn't ask us, they just went out and bought it. And now that they bought it, I, I don't think we're ever going to negotiate with them to move that location. And so I can live with that, but the amount and size, that's a stickler for me. So that's my direction.
Okay, I'm going to give the staff an opportunity to respond, and I do want to refocus, looking for direction on what we do with this, this draft agreement, and then I'm going to recognize Pinky and Dan, but, but go ahead, have you had some responses?
Yeah, Peter Raffado, Legal Department. I just wanted to, there was a couple points I wanted to follow up on. One is, I want to make sure we manage expectations, Councilmember Barker, just in terms of what it would look like to go out on our own. You know, I don't know how much of the, the couple millions of costs go into what the county, it took the county to get to where they are, but I just know that there's a lot of work that would have to go into something where you're actually, even, even on a conceptual basis, coming up with a finance, a financial model for how this, how Bellingham would go out and so on. So I just want to make sure we manage the expectation on something like that. As far as going on our own or, or continuing the alternatives, I have every reason to believe that we will continue to, continue alternatives. I know that from the various workgroups that we have with the municipal court, our prosecutors. We, we have every incentive to do that. Bellingham has the additional incentive of, we would have to pay for op, we have to pay for fees, booking fees and per diems as part of this. In addition to, there's just that general idea that that is an important thing for the city. The municipal court has their own program with that, with that respect, our prosecutors are totally on board, so I have no doubt that that is going to continue independently. Now, ultimately, I believe that we're better off if those are county-wide type programs, because what you find is, you get those numbers to a point where, well, you know, are you going to have a new community court for three people? Probably not. If you have a community court for 25, 30 people, you look at it county-wide, then, then now we're talking something that's potentially viable. So I think it's important, from that perspective, to think of it in terms of a county-wide perspective.
Pinky?
Yeah, I just wanted to address something to Councilmember Bornerman in regards to motivation. I, I respect your concerns there, and yes, we did get motivated because of circumstance, but one of the things that we were very strong on, Jean and I, was ensuring that it wasn't just a motivator, it's how we operate. And that, the, the board, in order to, that is specifically to ensure, there is also a member from the Prevention and Reduction Task Force on that board, and that is specifically to make sure that the way that we are operating is with the, with a motive, that we are reducing incarceration, that we are addressing as many alternatives and diversion programs as we possibly can. So this is our, this is our meter in how we're doing and ensuring that we are, it is not, just to let you know, this, when these discussions first started, it was going to be a service fee in order for us to have these programs. Now, this is not a fee for us, this has evolved enough that the county is completely on board with recognizing that changes need to be done in how we're operating our facilities, and that we, only way we got this far is to ensure that there was a level playing field across the board, regardless who those, who, where anybody came from or what their charges were. So this was really an important part of it, and it is built in, and we did make sure this was there. So I, I just wanted to address that.
Maybe if I could just add, you're right, Pinky, recital number 11 goes, I think, fairly far in that regard, on that the parties to this, agree to implement the recommendations of that task force. I think that's close, I think, April, to a shared statement on how the county, all the jurisdictions, all the parties are going to look at reducing incarceration.
Dan?
First of all, I wanted to thank my fellow councilmembers, Knutson and Vargas, for spending that amount of time and negotiating on behalf of the city for, to get to this. I realize that's, that's a lot of work, and, and that did take a, a lot of conversations. I just wanted to, just to express that, my, my frustration is kind of around, having been on the task force now for about a year and a half, where we're making great headway, I think, in some areas, like EHM in particular, city, city is making great headways, headway, but I think the county's coming along and small city governments as well. But what we don't have is the ability to measure that progress in any kind of meaningful way, because we just don't have the benefit of time to do that. So, so that's where I, that's where a lot of this frustration comes from. So, and then what it feels like to me is that I'm being asked to kind of guess, like, in an educated way, but, but really that, the precise data that I, that I need to make a decision just isn't there. And so that's, that's where I come from. So I don't want there to, to be any kind of perspective, okay, okay. All right, thanks.
So this item asks for direction to staff. Well, I, I heard Terry makes and imply a suggestion, which is that I think we'd like to have the county council also review this agreement formally, and maybe proceed a little further in their discussions, and then come back, because of course, that, that flavors how we feel about this agreement. Is that a general sense? That let's, let's wait for developments on, on across the street, then revisit this issue? Okay. That's direction to staff. Any further discussion on this? Great, we'll go on now to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from May 8th.
Move approval.
We have a motion in a second to approve the May 8th meeting minutes. Are any corrections to these? All those in favor of their adoption signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Those are passed. Items for old and new. Dan and Pinky?
Okay, so April and I have been working on this town hall concept, and so I just wanted to bring a concept forward for your consideration or to be shot down. So, we'll see. Yeah, it's only taken two and a half years, knock on wood. So basically, here's my perspective, and you can, you know, take it or leave it, and Councilmember Barker can chime in on this as well, but I think that we, we might benefit from having some framing of the issue. So I talked with a, a number of different people in the housing world, nonprofit housing world, and a suggestion was made to have someone from the Department of Commerce come, a gentleman named Ted Kelleher, who, who has extensive experience in housing affordability issues up and down the West Coast. So really, kind of a, not one of us, not a, a person who could be seen as being partisan or that kind of thing, but someone who's coming from outside the community, but does have some expertise to kind of frame that discussion. So, you know, and I don't know how long that takes, if that's 10 minutes or 15 minutes, but some short amount of time in the beginning of the meeting. Then, I know, what I heard from this council was that we want to hear from the constituents, and I, and I fully support that and agree with that. I think that there are a couple ways to do that. One is to have folks come and do public comment, testimony comment, and, and another way might be to have, like, a dialogue around, like, eight or 10 top tables. So eight or 10 people at a, at a, at a table, having conversations around maybe specific issues within housing affordability with us at tables, and perhaps some planning department staff members, to accommodate for what I feel is going to be a lot of people. I think that we, we might see a couple hundred or more people in that process. And, and so I guess the order of operations in my, my mind would be, frame the argument, here's what we want to talk about today. Perhaps have, perhaps or not have a, a smallish panel that we can, that members can ask questions to, so specific questions, then have dialogue at the tables, and then have public comments, so that satisfies the conversation components. To me, and I, I don't know what others think, and this is all like within two hours, so this is like on a really tight timeline, facilitated, facilitator kind of running the show, so it keeps us on track. So that's, that's what I've, in April, if I, if I misspoke on any, please correct me.
So what I, I guess I'd like to say is that there's a clear recognition that this is a big, big topic, and I think we maybe should be open to this not being the only kind of public event we have on this. We need to start off with a good footing, and these suggestions sound good.
And I, and I do think that the discussion needs to continue, because the, this issue will continue. So I think that, you know, maybe having a fall Part II type of event would be in order. If we survive. If we survive.
If we survive. Pinky?
I, I just want to say, I think this is a great direction. I know when I originally said, let's have this opportunity to work with the public and have better, more open discussion on topics, that is kind of the vision I had in mind, an opportunity for education, to see all kinds of the stories, and an opportunity for discussion and engagement, because I think just public comment alone, it doesn't provide any feedback, it's not civic engagement in regards to both, discussions going both ways. So I just want to commend you on the work, I think that's excellent, and I really like the direction that you're going in.
So one of the other issues that came up is that we were originally looking at the off Mondays. I think you recently suggested maybe we should be more flexible in actually when we schedule this as well. So, April?
So I, I think having experience, especially within the Parks Department, when we did some outreach with Cordada, typically what I saw happening was we were doing the same night of the week, always in the same place, and you were getting the same players every time. And I think this might be an opportunity for us, that there's just people that Mondays are not accessible to them, and we, I think we should definitely actually purposefully pick a day that's not a Monday, in order to, and of course, a different venue. So that's going to be our, our movement forward, if we have approval.
Roxanne?
I really support this approach, especially because, you know, you get people in a room, and you ask them what their thoughts are, we have to organize it, especially to frame it the right way, to show it's not just our problem, this is a problem throughout our country and the world. Because also, things that I'm thinking of, you know, maybe in the future, an outcome could be that we would have an advisory committee that would work on this with our nonprofit and other organizational partners, and maybe we could even, in January, set up a special council committee that would continually work on this.
Yeah, I think just to... And Jean, I'm sure you'll give your report out, but today we had our work session meeting, and we determined that there's, there's really two parts to the puzzle in talking with rental barriers and concerns. We're going to continue on with the immediate operations of rental, but that we requested and, and had full support of bringing back a, a broader topic on, on zoning, the pinch that actually our, our rules and laws are creating, and that we need to have more discussions on that with staff. So this will tie in, I think, quite nicely with the, that group is going to be doing their work sessions, but then we'll also be having other discussions with staff. their work sessions, but then we'll also be having other discussions with staff on, where do we need to go? How have things changed? What are we doing to participate in this? And how can we make some substantial changes? Sound good?
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, is support for not only the expanded program, but including some of the elements you're talking with. Is there also support for kind of the roundtable aspect, as well as the open mic? I think the way that I would like for us to present this to the public is, you know, we, we know what the problem is, or mostly, and we will present and discuss part of the problem, but we're really looking for solutions and good ideas as well. If you come to us and say, you know, it's hard enough for an apartment, we'll say, yeah, it really is. We know. So, I think hopefully we can move the discussion, you know, towards ideas and solutions as well. That can be part of it. So, it sounds like April and Dan have kind of our nod to go ahead and keep developing in that direction? But, Terry, you want to go?
The only, the only problem I, that I have with this approach is if we're all breaking up and talking to different groups. That's a dialogue, that group with me. It's not a dialogue with the council. And each group hears what I want to hear, or what April wants to, her views, or whatever, but it's not hearing what the council is necessarily saying on the different issues. And so it's, you know, it's not a, I'll go along with whatever you do, I just wanted to throw that out there, that this doesn't really give a, give and take, other than me with this group, and Roxanne with that group, and...
April?
I, I, it's up to every council member how much they're going to interject, but my hope at my table would be, I'm there to listen, and hopefully facilitate the conversation, and, and then reporting back on what I heard people talk about. And we can look further in world café styles, if we're going to have specific questions. I mean, we, we can, we can kind of pull that out, I guess, if a council member wants to talk about their views and, and push that on the group, that's their, their prerogative. But I trust that this council is capable of listening to the people at the table, listening to them collaborate, and have their discussion, and, and then reporting back to the council of what happened at the table.
And I, I'm fine with, with that, with that way, because that's what I said originally. I'm there to listen, but when I hear the talk that we want this to be a dialogue, then the dialogue implies usually both ways, so, and that's why I was bringing that up, is all.
Roxanne?
I'm there to listen.
I support Terry, because while our intention might be to facilitate, just us sitting at the table could politicize it, and turn it into, you know, some kind of, you need to do this, you need to do that, versus, you know, any kind of good dialogue that we might have with good idea generation. My dream for it would be that I could float around and listen in on tables, rather than actually facilitating.
That's what we did. You bring that up, Roxanne, we did that over at the ferry terminal one year, when we had a big meeting. It wasn't a pleasant meeting, but it was a good meeting, where everybody, council members went to one table and hopped all the way around. It was, it worked out pretty good.
So I'm going to suggest that we sort of manage expectations, that this isn't the event which accomplishes all things. This is an event, it's part of a larger effort. We were already involved in many small ways on the housing issue. This is one of the pieces. It may not be the ending event. A dialogue component is good. A listening component is really important. So, as long as we don't put too much on this one event, I think it'll be really, could be really very positive. Dan, you want to say anything else?
Yeah, so that, that kind of floating idea came up with, you know, some of the constituent groups that we talked about. I'm not opposed to that. I think that that, that could make sense, and we, you know, we can come back with more of a, or finalized recommendation that would include that, that component of it, because then there is the, the value of hearing different groups versus just the table that you're at for 40 minutes, or whatever, so...
Okay. So, anything else under old and new, or more on this?
No, I have something else for old and new.
Something else on old and new?
Something new.
So, everyone is aware that we are looking at a district energy system down at the waterfront, and I just wanted to let you know that I went on a district energy tour with the Port, Sustainable Connections, and Puget Sound Energy. We went up to Vancouver, we had a nice 10-hour day, so we saw two different systems. One of them is run by the City of Vancouver, and it has district heating for the Olympic Village, and it is a district, a city-owned district energy utility. So they're an energy provider, and they, they're running that. And then the second one, we, and that one is a, they capture methane off the sewer system, and that's how they operate that district energy system. And then the other one we went and looked at is at UBC, and they have a combination bioenergy system with a gas backup. So, we looked at two different kinds of systems, talked a lot about economies of scale, of having, you know, having to start small and bring on customers, and what the heavy lift of that is. We also discussed the difference in a two-pipe, four-pipe, five-pipe system, and I can get into more details, because I'm sure you all really want to know that, at another time. But I just wanted to say that it was really an incredible experience, to look at all of the aspects of what it is to bring customers on, the different kind of systems, the costs, and also in regards to how we reduce our carbon footprint, and what actually makes sense for us to do. So, I think all of us went away with a much better understanding, even just looking at the pipe size of difference of how things are distributed, heat versus cool, cooling, et cetera. And it was great to have those comparisons and talk to a city who's actually operated their own energy utility. So I just want to tell you that all of us had a really good, really good overview of what we could do, and some of our options here down at the waterfront, and I'll be sharing that information. But just to let you know, that was a really wonderful experience, to share that with the port, and for both of us to see things at the same time.
Great.
Real quick, the Port, Port Marine Advisory Committee took a tour of the All-American Marine Building on the waterfront. Absolutely fantastic operation. They now have about 55 employees, they're going to ramp up to 75 employees. They have four ships under contract right now, that is four years of work, at the rate of $32 million in ships. They're getting a little angry at their sales team, because they're selling them way faster than they can build them. So, I did ask the question of future expansion, and it's a possibility down the road, so...
Good news.
I think we're very fortunate to have them down there, and if you get a chance, you should stop by and take a look. It is unbelievable how they build those ships. It's, they're building 226-foot ferries, they're building factory trawlers, they're really doing a great job down there.
Big doors.
You should get them in and out.
Anything else at old and new? Dan?
With the immigration ordinance, we had asked mayor's office to come back with some options on some type of citizen committee, but I think the, where we left it was a broader, like, citywide committee, if I recall correctly. I'm just wondering what the status of that is.
I don't have an update in terms of, you know, certainly we've discussed and looked at different options, what other cities have done. We'll have to, it might help us if there was maybe some date certain on when you'd like something, if it's later this summer, or something like that. We, we don't have a formal option for you to consider right now, other than beyond just, you know, 30,000-foot level discussion on, well, how would this take form? What are, what's available to people today that they can use in terms of reach out to you, or to the mayor, or mayor's office, or city staff? So, I can't offer you anything much beyond that.
Well, it's just, it's been a, it's been a while, so, my expectation that we would have, you know, something before, soon, so, so soon, would be...
Can we have something, well, maybe that's the next meeting, the one after that?
Sure.
Thanks.
Pinky?
Actually, I do have one other thing to add. So last year, at the end of the year, we looked at having a salary commission, and we decided to do that in-house, and we were going to get that, move forward on that, and it's already May, so I'm wondering if that could be brought towards, I'm guessing, the finance...
We've already had feedback.
We motioned, that's supposed to be in the finance committee.
Oh.
So, we just completed that salary survey. I briefed Michael on Thursday, and I was going to forward that, the results of that survey to you. I'm sorry, I haven't...
No, perfect, that's okay. It sounds like everybody's on the same wave, so, thank you very much.
Send it to you one day early.
Okay? All right? Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Well, that was a really nice discussion on the jail, but it puts us a bit behind. We have a lengthy executive session, we have eight items to discuss, totaling 70 minutes of estimated time. We're going to recess now, to, adjourn to exec, recess, I think, to executive session, and I would come back here at five minutes till four o'clock, if we're done by then. We're in recess.